Stand firm, pledge allegiance. Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, we bow our heads before you. We offer praises unto you, Lord, for we know that all that we have and all that we will be comes from you. We ask for your blessing upon this meeting. May your voice be heard here tonight. We ask that you be with our sick and our shut out, that you lay your healing hand upon them, and comfort them in their time of need. These things I pray in the name of my Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to please, the court call a roll.
I grow.
Here.
Householder, here.
Flowers.
Here.
Weingart, here.
Right.
Here.
Motion carries. Excuse me. I'll hurry you. Reorganization, folks. First meeting in the year, early into the January fifteenth, we must reorganize, and we must by charter select a president pro temp of council.
Mr. Mayor, if I could at this time, if not out of order, I'd like to make a motion that council retain the same seats that they're in right now for 2015.
Mr. I grow?
Yes.
I would suggest, because this has never been done before, I would suggest that council, first motion on the floor is council waive any and all rules.
Second.
Motion by Mr. I grow, second by Mr. Hart, to waive any and all rules of council. Questions? Hearing the court call a roll.
I grow.
Aye.
Householder, aye.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Weingart, aye.
Aye.
Right.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, Mr. I grow.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that existing seats that council presently holds remain the same for 2015.
Second.
Motion by I grow, second by Hart, remain seats. The seats remain as is for 2015. Questions or comments?
Do we still get the candy?
That's negotiable, because it's standing and sitting in front of me. Hearing the court call a roll.
I grow.
Aye.
Householder, aye.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Weingart, aye.
Aye.
Right.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Motion carries. Folks, remain seated. The chair will now open nominations for president pro temp of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am?
I would like to nominate David Wright as president pro temp.
We have Mr. Wright's nomination for president pro temp.
Second.
Not necessary.
Not necessary?
Any other further nominations?
Well, you have my second.
Close nominations.
Not necessary. One more call. Any further nominations? If not, chairs, you're going to declare that nominations are closed. The motion should be to unanimously appoint Mr. Wright as president of council.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Weingart, seconded by I grow, to make Mr. Wright president of council, president pro temp. Any questions or comments? Hearing the court call a roll.
I grow.
Aye.
Householder, aye.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Weingart, aye.
Aye.
Right.
Abstain.
Hart.
Aye.
Very good. Congratulations, Mr. Wright.
Thank you, councilman.
And, Mr. Hart, I would like to take this opportunity publicly, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
You've been the president of council for the last three years of my administration. I appreciate your efforts.
I appreciate the, uh, the, uh, forth that all council members had in me to take the mayor's place when he was in absence, and I'm very proud of it, especially from the members that I sit with here. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Rules of council. Now, rules of council must be changed when two or more members of council, uh, there's a change in two or more members. We have kind of made a habit of reviewing these annually and approving them annually. There are a, there is a proposal on the floor, or, excuse me, that was given to me to adopt the rules of council that have come in your agenda. It is, from what I understand, there are no changes, it's just a little different formatting of them. What's your pleasure?
Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the council rules that have been rearranged for the 2015 year.
Second.
Motion to adopt council rules as presented, as presented, excuse me, by Hart, seconded by Weingart. Questions or comments? Hearing the court call a roll.
I grow.
Aye.
Householder, aye.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Weingart, aye.
Aye.
Right.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Motion carries. Council rules are adopted. Next order of business would be the appointment of council committees for 2015. Finance committee, uh, be Mr., uh, I will seek advice and consent of council for the following committee appointments. Finance committee, Mr. Hart as chair, Ms. Householder and Mr. I grow. Legislative committee, Ms. Weingart as chair, Mr. Hart and Mr. Flowers. Capital improvements committee, Ms. Householder, chair, Mr. Flowers, Mr. Wright. Annexation, Business and Land Development Committee, Mr. I grow chair, Ms. Householder and Ms. Weingart. Service Maintenance and Stormwater Committee, Mr. Wright chair, Mr. Hart, Mr. I grow. Safety Committee, Mr. Flowers chair, Ms. Weingart and Mr. Wright. Boards and Commissions would be, Park and Recreation would be Mr. Wright. Planning and Zoning Commission would be Ms. Weingart. Civil Service Commission, Ms. Householder. Firemen's Dependency Board, Mr. Flowers and Mr. I grow, and I will man the Veterans Memorial and the Retention Committee, according to the, uh, the Retention Committee according to ordinance. I seek your advice and consent for those appointments.
Mayor, I make a motion, we, uh, accept your, um, consent or consideration for all council committee and council representatives.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Wright, and thank you, Mr. Hart. Questions or comments? Hearing the court call a roll.
I grow.
Aye.
Householder, aye.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Weingart, aye.
Aye.
Right.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Motion carries. Boards and commissions are, and appointments are in place for 2015. For the remainder of this meeting, when we get to committee reports, we will use the 2014 chairmans. We would start 2015 immediately following the reports of 2014 today. Okay. Board and Commissions, Park and Recreation Board this year was a, uh, an appointment by the, uh, School Board, and they have appointed Mr. Robert Slazer of nine fifteen or twelve street. They let me know that they would have that in writing to us, uh, probably after tonight's meeting. Planning and zoning, uh, I have asked Mr. Ken Zeberneck, who is currently the chairman of planning and zoning, uh, to retain, uh, his spot on the board, and he has accepted. Civil Service Commission, Mr. Slazer resigns Civil Service Commission to take the park and, or, take the position on Park and Recreation, and I have asked Mr. Brent Rarick of West Florida Avenue to accept a, uh, a position and fill the unexpired term, and Mr. Rarick has accepted. Firemen's Dependency Board, we've covered. Fair Housing Board is a non, ongoing permanent appointment, and that's Ms. Lee, Mr. Schrag, and, uh, Ms. Snyder, and with that, I would ask council's advice and consent on boards and commission appointments for 2015 and on.
Mayor, I make a motion to, uh, accept the board and commission appointments for 2015.
Second. Motion to accept the board and commission appointments by Mr. Hart, seconded by Mr. Wright. Questions or comments? Hearing the court call a roll.
I grow.
Aye.
Householder, aye.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Weingart, aye.
Aye.
Right.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Motion carries. All boards and commission appointments have been approved. That should conclude our reorganizational meeting, unless anybody has anything else that I may just... Okay. I'm going to ask council right now, since rules have soon been suspended, uh, is there anyone here that has any type of a question for our solicitor tonight? Do you have any report that needs to be given tonight? My solicitor, you are excused.
Yes.
Please, go home.
Ray, walk him to the door.
Two are basically kicking you out.
Yeah.
Yeah. Go home.
Probably better than that.
Go home. When you're sick, you're sick. Go home.
No, still aren't off.
Okay. You are excused. You are excused anytime you wish.
I think you're funny, people are going to get out of here by eight o'clock anyway.
Maybe before that.
They're going to get out of here before.
Okay.
Teresa, I'll wait till your, uh...
The football plan was canceled.
No. No. I was running to the third seat over here.
No.
I'm telling all the boys, this is a football game.
Teresa, I'm going to wait till your temperature's about 103.5, and then I'll come bug you tomorrow.
Okay. I'm not contagious at all.
You are excused anytime you wish, my solicitor.
Okay. I hope this one will leave it free.
Okay. Reading the disposition of the minutes of the previous meetings, council, what's your pleasure?
I make a motion, we dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Second.
Motion by I grow, seconded by Flowers, dispense with the reading of the previous minutes. Chair will call for any additions, corrections, and/or deletions.
There is one typo on the back page. The first paragraph in the back was, is the motion to adopt that tax amnesty amnesty or to exceed, which is not supposed to be, it's to extend.
Extend, I see it.
See it?
Yeah.
Yes, that means a lot.
Will anybody find that? Okay?
That's it.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing the court call a roll.
I grow.
Aye.
Householder, aye.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Weingart, aye.
Aye.
Right.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Motion carries. Minutes are approved as presented. Okay. Citizens' comments, any citizen wish to address council this evening? Oh, my. Reading, referring of communications and/or petitions, any petitions to be presented to council? In communications, to be presented to council?
Oh, I, I, did you read in the paper, in the, uh, on the editorial page, the letter from the postmaster?
Yes.
Wasn't that excellent?
Yes, it was.
I feel like we, we need to do something. Maybe I'll just send him a note, tell him what a nice, nice letter. Okay, that's all I have.
Very good. Reported council committees and council representatives. Mr. Hart, finance.
Yes, Mayor, members of council. The Finance Committee did meet on January sixth in council chambers at seven P.M. The agenda was to review a request for $4,000 from the revolving loan fund for a Melody Scott, uh, that I have here, is P.O. Box forty-five in Bowie, Ohio. Members present were Chairperson James Hart, also in attendance was committee member Eddie Householder. Member David Wright was excused through a grievance of previous committee. Both members of finance reviewed a draft or ordinance slash development agreement put forth for Melody Scott, as she has expressed a desire to expand her business to include improvements to two seven two North Fifteenth Street, Sebring, Ohio, which is within the downtown development area of the municipality of Sebring. After reading and discussion of the proposed request, the committee wishes to present this to council and ask for council's approval by way of ordinance number zero one dash two zero one five. Also note that with absent, uh, absence of committee member David Wright, he spoke with the chair prior to the meeting and voiced his approval for this request. With no other business to discuss, the meeting closed at seven forty-five. Respectfully submitted, Chairperson James Hart. That was all we had.
Mr. Hart?
Also, at this point in time, I would like to make a motion to pay bills from checks dated twelve twenty, two thousand fourteen, through one nine, two thousand fifteen, when funds become available, in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars, ninety-eight cents.
Second. Mr. Hart, seconded by Wright, end bills when funds become available. Questions, comments?
Mayor, any questions or comments highlighting the outstanding bills for this paper, it are his fault. Seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars, ninety-six cents to Columbia Gas, three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents to direct business to energy, six thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars, sixty-three cents to On the Spot Cleaners for the flood damage at the wastewater treatment plant, nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars, ninety-six cents to the downtown revitalization loan repayment, and two thousand, six hundred dollars for the annual discharge fee for two thousand fourteen, that's involving the Ohio EPA.
Very good, Mr. Hart. Any other questions or comments? Court call a roll.
I grow.
Aye.
Householder, aye.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Weingart, aye.
Aye.
Right.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Motion carries. Bills will be paid. Anything else on your finance, Mr. Hart?
No, Mayor, no, all I have, thank you.
Safety, Mr. Flowers.
We have not had a meeting, however, I would like to set up a meeting within the next, uh, week. I'll get with the rest of my committee and set something up.
Very good. Business redevelopment, um, and land acquisition, Ms. Householder?
No meeting, Mayor.
Capital improvement, Mr. Wright?
Uh, no meeting, Mayor.
Uh, service maintenance and stormwater, Mr. I grow?
No meeting, Mayor.
Legislative, Ms. Weingart?
Yes, meeting. The meeting was Jan, Wednesday, January seventh at six P.M. All three of us were there, Ken Flowers, Joe I grow, and myself. But one item on the agenda was reviewing reorganized council rules. We discussed suggestions, sort of confusing word use, and agreed to the final product submitted this evening. The meeting adjourned at six twenty-five P.M. Now, added on here to update the items in committee are the golf court, golf cart proposal and water means and billing information. And since House Bill five, municipal income tax revision was passed by the Senate and signed by the governor, governor, we will be reviewing the information I received from the Attorney General's office. If any council member has any other issue you would like us to consider, just let me know.
Very good. Okay. Boards and commission, parks, Mr. Wright?
Um, Mayor Parks, uh, board did meet, uh, last Thursday. They approved the November meeting notes. They did not have a meeting in December. Some of the things that, uh, went on in November was, uh, the memorial plaques for the trees, Marvin has those, will work with, uh, Mr. Sanner in the spring to get those installed. The pavilion repair, repair has been completed now. Bill has a little bit of cleanup to do there, but the, the ground hasn't been hard enough to get the, get the equipment in. Talked about some health department issues, um, primarily the waiting pool. I think we've remedied most of the other, other issues that, that were in question. Talked about summer staffing. So we'll start to, we'll start to run some ads and talk to the school about that for this year. We do have a new guidance counselor at the high school this year, so hopefully we can gain a little bit more support that way. Equipment purchase, purchases. Winter activities, uh, Santa Claus was at the center on the thirteenth, we had about twenty-five kids show up. Um, of course, we haven't had much snow up until today, so no, no toboggan hill operation, but they will be planning that in the future. Talked about the rentals, um, and then also, uh, they looked at the Fourth of July draft contract, which council has approved, and they did approve. And that's basically it, Mayor, at this point. Unless you have anything to add, you were at the last meeting. Oh, they did, they did, uh, tonight, they do have one, uh, ordinance or resolution on the, on the agenda tonight to rent a room to MYCAP for the use of some space at the, at the community center. That was probably the most important thing they did in January, is meet.
Okay. Any questions? Planning, Ms. Householder?
No meeting, Mayor.
Civil Service, Ms. Weingart?
No meeting.
Uh, retention and memorial committees, neither one met. With that, manager's report.
Due to my absence, Mr. Mayor, I, uh, I do not have a report this evening.
Very good. Uh, while the manager was off and, uh, I was filling in, I will tell you that the, uh, the police department has now completed all required yearly training and submitted all necessary paperwork to the state of Ohio, brings them into compliance with all state guidelines. Village inspector will be inspecting six sixteen West Tennessee and four forty-eight South Fifteenth Street as far as the, uh, inhabitation of them is concerned. They had problems at the village hall with the computer systems, uh, this problem went on in some of the areas for over a week. For some reason, the internet, the internet host stopped working, and there were some problems there that our maintenance, computer maintenance man and the, uh, the system that he does not control had to be worked on and worked out. I think that's all I have for that week. Uh, on January ninth, you received a report, uh, that the water treat, during the water treatment plant had had trouble with their standby generator. It has now been repaired, available for services needed. We have an employee who was off work for several days due to illness, but has now returned to work. Our water treatment plant lab has been doing the bacteria testing for the Mahoney Valley Racine, uh, through cooperative program with, uh, the Village of Lisbon, who, uh, we do their lab work for, and it brings in about, uh, ninety bucks a week for the lab. At the, uh, and also, Mr. Bates is working on a enhanced, they call it the L two, LT two report, and it's for surface water treatment, and, uh, also the, uh, consumer competence report that has to be done. Other than that, the, most reports are being prepared for the EPA for the annual recording session. The wastewater plant, uh, plant upgrade continues, targeted completion is the end of this month. We believe that, uh, that can be accomplished. The plant had an hour power outage last week, uh, backup generators worked properly, and a hot medicine was called in to repair their transformer. That the service department did a great job with the winter weather and road conditions this past week, and because of the inclement weather that we've seen, they've been performing work on the equipment, uh, as, as time permitted, and keeping the roads cleared off. At the fire department, we had a fireman with a minor injury, um, a thumb sprain while on EMS call. He is, uh, working, and, uh, says he's going to be okay. You know, he was seen by a, a physician in an emergency room immediately after. Police department has been doing their normal activities, there was nothing in particulars to report there, and the, uh, Fair Housing Board is going to meet next Monday on the twelfth for their annual organizational meeting. They have no business on their agenda other than that. With that, that's all I would have. Counsel, have any questions? Manager, I will tend to...
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I was studying the income tax projection report.
Yes.
And I want to, I want you to know how effective that amnesty program was. If we hadn't done it, we would be down ten thousand dollars. So I went to last year's, and we would have been down last year sixteen thousand dollars. We cleared up over two hundred delinquent accounts. I, I just think that was phenomenal. I, I can't believe it. I, it, that's it. All facts and figures. Very successful.
So you are aware, your office staff has worked very diligently on that project to make sure it gets completed in timely fashion and orderly fashion. I think the public was appreciative of the efforts.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, if you also look at the report, I just wanted to briefly note that, um, our projections for two thousand fourteen was one million, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and actual collections was one million, six hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and six dollars and thirty cents. So we were a hundred and seventy thousand, or almost a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars above projections, so, very good year.
Okay. And you also under manager's report, any questions? Report of other officials? Lab court, you have any?
No.
It's two departments heads. Anyone you guys have any?
Yeah.
Uh, Chief Everly?
Yes, sir.
You want a very, very brief executive session at the end?
As long as I don't get lynched, I can bring it up real quick.
Well, I'm talking about personnel issue.
Right, right.
I bought rope.
Quickly, very quickly, very quick. And that will be up to council if they want to hear that. Mr. Sanner?
Two things. Uh, Corey Hughes passed his water supply one, uh, last Thursday, and Nick Mucklow, my youngest guy, got his C T L, C E L, uh, this afternoon.
Excellent.
Great.
Very good.
C T Ls.
Okay, we're going to go into ordinances and resolutions.
The drive group.
Okay. Counsel, this is a...
Mayor, may I please?
Mr. I grow?
I can make a motion, we read Resolution zero one dash two zero one five, Resolution zero two dash two zero one five, Resolution zero three dash two zero one five, and ordinance zero one dash two zero one five by title only.
Second. Motion by I grow, seconded by Hart, read by title only. Questions, comments? Hearing the court call a roll.
I grow.
Aye.
Householder, aye.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Weingart, aye.
Aye.
Right.
Aye.
Hart.
Motion carries. Uh, Resolution zero dash one, this comes from Finance Committee, Mr. Hart. This is a resolution requesting the advanced distribution of property taxes from the Mahoney County Auditor. This would be for tax year two thousand fourteen, payable in tax year two thousand fifteen. Counsel, having heard the resolution, read by title, what's your pleasure?
Mayor, make a motion to adopt the resolution as read.
Second.
Motion by Hart, seconded by Weingart, to adopt the resolution as read. Questions or comments? I would just say, the, the auditor requires us to do this annually. Okay. Hearing the court call a roll.
I grow.
Aye.
Householder, aye.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Weingart, aye.
Aye.
Right.
Aye.
Hart.
Motion carries. This is a Resolution number oh two. The committee review is Park and Recreation, and this is also sponsored by Councilmember Wright. This is a resolution directing municipal clerk to request the county auditor to certify to the Village, Sebring Village Council, the current tax evaluation of Sebring and the amount of revenue that would be generated by a one mil tax levy for the operation of parks and recreation. Counsel, having heard the resolution and read by title only, what's your pleasure?
Mayor, make a motion, we adopt the resolution as read.
Second.
Motion by Wright, seconded by Weingart, to adopt as read. Under comments, I would refer you to Section 3, Line 2. The word ordinance must be changed to resolution. We will treat that as a typo. Any other questions or comments? Maryland Court call the roll.
I grow.
Aye.
Householder?
Aye.
Flowers?
Aye.
Weingard?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Harp?
Motion carries. This is Resolution number 03. This is a resolution authorizing municipal manager to enter into rental agreement with Mahoney Youngstown Community Action Partnership, known as MYCAP, for, for space at the F.A. Sebring Community Building. Counsel, having heard the resolution, read it by title, what's your pleasure?
Mayor, make a motion, we adopt the resolution as read.
Second.
Motion by Weing, excuse me, by Wright, seconded by Flowers, to adopt as read. Questions or comments?
Under comments, Mayor, this is for Classroom 202, which is the first classroom on the left-hand side going up the main hallway. They will use that room two to three days per week, from eight to four, at a cost of $600 per month. And they will have some use of some of the other facilities there, but those all have to be scheduled with the, with the director.
Very good. Mr. Harp?
Yes, Mayor. With that being said, are they moving totally out of the bank building?
Yes. Mr. I grow?
The rental money that's taken in from this rental is going to general fund or is going to Bank of Parks?
It'll go to general fund. What we can do is, you can do it several ways. One, you can put it in general fund, and if you want to allocate that additional funding for the parks specifically, you can just make an appropriation. Or you can create a Parks Revolving Fund, which means any money that you would receive from that, that revenue, you could specify to that specific account earmarked specifically for Parks. You can do it either way.
Mayor, why wouldn't they go in the community center fund? Automatically, that's, that's basically that entity that's generating...
True, but most, other than your utility proprietaries, water and sewer, which are good water and sewer fund, all other monies that are generated are put into general fund. It's not specifically earmarked for any particular fund unless council directs it to be so.
It doesn't really matter, we transfer money into the community center.
Yeah. All you need to do is keep track, and if you want to earmark it, you just make an additional appropriation.
And also, let me refer you to Section 2, Line 2. We have the same thing with ordinance and resolution. We'll treat that as a typo. We had some problems with formatting with the computers. Any other questions or comments? Maryland Court call the roll.
I grow.
Aye.
Householder?
Aye.
Flowers?
Aye.
Weingard?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Harp?
Motion carries. Or, the resolution is adopted as presented. This is Ordinance number 01-2015. And this comes from Finance Committee, and Mr. Harp, who is the chairman, who is the sponsor of this. This is an ordinance authorizing directing the village manager to enter into a revolving loan development agreement with Melody Scott for $4,000 and acquiring an emergency. Counsel, having heard the ordinance, read by title only with emergency, what's your pleasure?
Mayor, make a motion to adopt the ordinance as read with the emergency clause?
Second.
Motion by Harp, seconded by Wright, to adopt with the emergency clause. Questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the copy of the ordinance, it says for a period of 12 months. On the contract, it says two years. Am I mixed up?
Roman numeral three.
Under Section D, Roman numeral three.
Could be a typo. Just add 24 months.
Three.
Which should have made 12 months.
Turn to the script.
She wants 12 months.
Okay.
She wanted 12 months?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, we didn't get that out of there. Yeah. So it's one year?
One year.
As, just a side note, after this, the award is given to Ms. Scott, there's a $6,000 balance remaining in that line item without any additional appropriation if somebody else comes forward.
Okay. Are we going to treat that as a typo, Counsel?
Yes, please.
Here's another one, it could be a typo. In reference to her address, one is saying 272 North 15th Street, and then when you get down in, in the first page of the development agreement, under Section 2, Paragraph A, it says 227 North 15th Street.
Oh, yeah.
I'm seeing two, two different addresses. Is that a typo?
Yeah.
Yes.
272.
These will have to be checked before she signs them. I'll make the adjustments.
Yeah, it occurs throughout the development agreement with the different address.
Doesn't matter, I'm just going to do the copy on the program.
All right. In Section 1.
Unord.
An ordinance. Fourth line down. The word vacade.
Assad.
Assad is to be deleted.
Okay.
It's heating.
Yeah, that's right.
It's outside on the front. Yeah.
Well...
It's raining to the trees.
Hanging into her window.
Okay.
It's heated outside.
Any other questions or comments? Maryland Court call the roll.
I grow.
Aye.
Householder?
Aye.
Flowers?
Aye.
Weingard?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Harp?
The ordinance passes. Okay, we'll call for the second pass, the citizens' comments. Any other business to come before counsel this evening?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Charters, how many, how many charter books do we have left? A ton of them?
I think there's like 20 or so in the box.
Stack over here.
No, I, because we have to have it printed.
Right.
And I just wondered if we have a whole bunch of them, do we just want to get a one page to put in them, or, you know, do we have a carton, two cartons, or none?
I got the check.
Okay, would, would you look into that? Okay, thanks.
I think all of you received, I believe it's come from Mr. Flowers from Prairie Village.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to have to ask you about that, you got that. I just thought it was a nice little...
It is.
It covers everything we seem to want, and it was...
It, it talks about vegetation, talks about home occupancy, talks about stormwater, building permits. It's a, it's just a good little information packet. Thank you, Ken. Anything else come before counsel? You listed a very, very brief executive session on a personal item.
Some of it.
No business to take afterward? Okay. Motion is to adjourn an executive session with no business to follow, except to adjourn.
Excuse me, I just had one question. The Fair Housing Annual Meeting, you said that's Monday, 10 o'clock?
19?